We can definitely use them.
Okay, I think we're past time to start our meeting. Official time clock, let me know. Thank you all for coming today. As you see, Councilman Smith is not with us tonight. He'll be having a medical procedure tomorrow. So I'll mention him in my prayer. If we'd like to go ahead and start our meeting, I'll offer an invocation at this time. Then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Most gracious heavenly Father, we lift up Wayne this evening as he is, I think, already gone to Raleigh for his procedure that be taking place tomorrow. And we just ask that you lift him up, be with him and Pat, and, you know, be with the doctors, Lord, as they undertake this critical procedure that will help Mr. Smith get back to health so that he can return to his duties here with the city and going about the work of helping the citizens in our area. Father, we just ask that you continue to bless us, bless our community, help us through the difficult days that we have ahead, and help us to be thankful for the blessings that we've had and continue to look forward to. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You had an opportunity to review the minutes. I mean, first, we need to adopt the business agenda. We'll need a motion for that when somebody's ready to do so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the business agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, do her second to her motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda would be approved as it is presented. We do have one individual, Mr. Benthal had signed up for unscheduled public comment tonight. Mr. Benthal, if you would like to come to the podium and just for the record, if you would state your name and where you live. We generally allot three minutes for unscheduled comment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. My name's Jonathan Benthal. Most everybody here knows me. I worked for the city police department from 2008 to 2020, twelve years. I'm here today to just talk about the, add my comments, debate about the tax proposal that we've got going on right now. I wrote a letter to the editor, Lance, and he was kind enough to publish that. I've got some feedback from different folks. I figured I'd come out tonight and kind of respond to that and let you guys know.
Thank you. What my opinions are. So on the handouts I've given you, these are basically screenshots from the documents that the city provided to Lance a couple of weeks back. I just kind of focused in at the top where you see general fund revenues by source. It's just the top line of the ad valorem tax revenue that we're expecting to get. Twenty twenty-four, seven point five nine nine million. That's what the city hopes to get, okay? The next little screen cap down is the examples of tax impacts on revenue. We can see I put a little box around there, the proposal, the rate, and the dollar amount. Below that, I just did some simple math. We took the nine point two proposed amount that the city's hoping to get and the seven point five nine, which we're hoping to collect in revenues for this year, and subtracted them. That's one point six million and some change. Do a little bit more math, and that amounts to a twenty-one point two seven percent increase in revenue. After I had written my letter to the editor, I got some feedback, and it was suggested to me, well, Benthal, take and apply these numbers to you personally, to how it's going to hit your pocketbook and your valuation on the home that you want. I live at seven twelve Park Avenue, I think I was supposed to say that, because I live right here in town. So I did that. I got on the Halifax County tax website and pulled down the numbers there, and that's what you see if you flip over. There's the second page that says owner Benthal Jonathan. That's the page I'm on right now. There's another page that just says Benthal, ignore that for now. Make sure you're on the one that says owner. All right, so my personal situation is this. My home used to be valued at a hundred and two thousand dollars. Through the process of the revaluation, it's now allegedly worth one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred dollars. Do a little bit of simple math, subtract the numbers one from the other, that's an increase of nine thousand four hundred dollars. So for me personally, that's an eight point four four percent increase in the value of my house, okay? Next, I broke that down into the dollar amounts of what I had to pay last year and what I will be expected to pay under the new proposed rate. So moving down, if you look at the old valuation tax levy is the portion I'm referring to now, you can see it's simple math. The old valuation of my home was a hundred and two thousand dollars. You multiply that by point zero one, because the rate is per one hundred dollars, not per dollar, and then you multiply it by the rate at that time, which is point six six one. My tax bill was therefore six hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cent. Look at the bottom, and you can see the math checks out. There's my tax bill from last year. Let's jump ahead. If the proposal passes, what will I owe next year? To figure that out, we'll take my new valuation, one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred dollars, that's right there to the right, multiply it by the point oh one to adjust for the rate, multiply it by the proposed rate of point six four one. My personal tax bill will be seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents. Subtract the old from the new, that's only a difference of thirty-nine eighty-five, forty bucks. Anybody got forty bucks I can get real quick? No, no takers. One guy's forty dollars, might be somebody else's four hundred dollars. When we're dealing with other people's money, I think it's kind of easy to say, well, you can handle that. That's a broad brush to paint with, to assume somebody else's circumstances and the dollar amount and how that will affect that person. But truly, forty dollars isn't that big of a deal to me. I can afford forty dollars. But it also struck me as funny that it's only forty dollars. Going back to the numbers on the front, on what we just talked about earlier, there's still one point six million that we hope to come up with. Forty dollars is not a drop in the bucket to get to that, and we're not, that's a long road to hoe at forty dollars a pop, right? So I'm thinking, I'm an outlier. Let's look at some other properties in town and see how the valuation and the rate's going to affect somebody else. All right, so flip over to the side that just says Benthal at the top. Now, I live a block down the street from my parents. They live in the six hundred block of Park Avenue, I live in the seven hundred block. Same neighborhood, should be a comparable, you know, change between property values, you would think. All right, let's examine my parents' numbers. Now, to give you a little bit of background, my dad worked at Calagonia and Tillery for over thirty years, retired from the prison. Mom was a nurse over in North Hampton County, retired there. They're both retired on a fixed income, and they care for my elderly grandmother who's over ninety years old with multitude of health problems. So how would this affect other people? Because it seems like the comment was, well, this, not doing this increase is only gonna benefit those who are super wealthy or those who are...
In keeping with our three minutes.
All right, I'll wrap it up. I'll wrap it up right now.
Kind of quick as you can.
Sure. It's only going to affect people who own a lot of property, those who are very rich. My parents are not very rich. You can look at these numbers. Their house went from one thirty-seven four, revalued to one seventy-five. That's a change in thirty-three thousand one hundred. They got hit with a nineteen percent increase on their property. Do the math and figure out, right there below, you can see it, the real dollar amount they're going to have to pay. It's going to go from nine hundred and eight dollars to about eleven hundred dollars. That's a twenty percent increase for them. That's two hundred dollars to them. There's a wide disparity, seemingly, between how these properties are being valued across town. So what doesn't hurt one person will hurt another person. So I just encourage everybody, whoever might read this or see it later online, get on the tax website, do the math for yourself, see if it's going to hit you with forty dollars or two hundred dollars or wherever in between, and just let these guys know how you feel about it so we're all informed and they can make a better decision for us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benthal. I think the information we have is pretty explanatory, so we generally don't have questions for this type of thing, so thank you again for your comments. Now we're at the minutes. We have the May seventh regular meeting minutes, and we would need a motion to approve them when somebody would like to make one. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the May seventh, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting minutes as drafted.
Okay, Mr. Steinbach has a motion. Do you hear a second to the motions? Second by Mr. Strickland. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The minutes will be approved as they are presented. Okay, next I call on Mr. Chalka for budget ordinance.
Good evening, mayor and council citizens. I come before you tonight for your consideration of a budget ordinance, twenty twenty-four dot zero nine, for emergency work to a storm drain on Challoner Drive. We were notified by the Runet Rapid Sanitary District earlier this month concerning a large and deep sinkhole located at fourteen thirty-two West Challoner Drive. After inspection, it was determined that the storm drainage pipe collapsed in the city's street of right-of-way, and that collapse was actually a result of our eroded storm drain system that's back from the early fifties when it was installed. When the pipe collapsed, the water backed up until it found its way out of the system, causing a large hole. This hole was in the city's right-of-way, basically in what appeared to be someone's front yard. Right Meyer Machine Rentals has given an estimate of forty-five thousand dollars for the repair, and the estimate is attached. Now, because of its emergency status, we did go ahead and pull Wrightmire to the site. They were available, and they have already started their work pending our payment to them. What I'm asking you to do is to consider a motion to adopt the budget amendment ordinance number twenty twenty-four dot zero nine in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to repair the storm drain on Challoner Drive, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Chalka? I would just say that events like this one and the one we had last year lets us all know why we need to have a pretty good fund balance, because when you have to take forty-five here, and I think the one last year was like seventy, wasn't it, Mr. Chalka? Yeah, it can take away your money pretty quickly. So we would need a motion to do this.
I'd like to make a motion...
I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Chalka's recommendation for the $45,000 to be appropriated for a budget ordinance number 2024.09 in the amount of $45,000 to repair the storm drain on Challoner Drive.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Bell?
Second.
Second by Steinbach? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion will be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chalka. Can I call on the city manager for a proposal on the fiscal year budget, 2425?
Good evening, mayor and council, and guest citizens and staff. We're going to further discuss the FY25 recommended budget that has been presented to the city council during its work session last week on Monday, May 13, and then the budget books you should have retained from that meeting. There's been some minor adjustments here and there, but nothing to really substantially change at this point. So you may see some, a few little differences. I've updated the budget message to go along with this. There weren't really any changes on the first page of the budget message that's in front of you. Just reminding that, as the mayor just said, the strong financial reserves are something that is recommended, especially because with fluctuations in different agencies. So for example, when the national government doesn't have a budget passed yet, and we've seen them have to go through temporary budgets before, that actually slows down refunds, like in the event if we had a FEMA disaster or something like that. And so the economists are telling us basically to hold tight to your reserves, but just be conservative with that. And so this proposed budget does not include any use of unassigned fund balance in order to do this. And the budget itself really helps to meet many of the demands that have been, or the needs that have been deferred for years and years and years, and helps to restore some of the maintenance levels in our departmental budgets as well. The reason why, when people want to know why things cost so much more, things cost more. And the things that cost more, if you go to the second page, information from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, we can see it's a comparison of visual graphics that compares from the year 2000 up to 2020, the rate of increases where hospital services have significantly increased, college and tuition fees, textbooks, medical care services, childcare, food and beverage, housing, and so forth. Some of the things that have gone down in prices, things like televisions. You used to pay a lot of money for a small, heavy TV that probably didn't have a remote control, and now you can get very light 60-inch TVs for a fraction of the cost. But, so there are things that have gotten cheaper over time or less expensive, but this just goes to show that it's not just affecting Rona Rapids, it's not just affecting North Carolina. This is affecting the United States overall, our world economy, and so forth. Because we're, and you have to look at the global things of what's going on, conflicts in Middle East and various things that affect our supply and demand, and the laws of economics end up driving the cost based on those needs. So according to this article, that it says broadly speaking, price levels have increased by 74% since the year 2000, which is pretty significant, but a lot of this is just part of new regulations that come out and new requirements that we all have to comply with. The fiscal year 20, the current year, so fiscal year 24 or 2324, I'm just going to keep saying fiscal year 24 for the ease of it, that's where we are right now. The prior year was fiscal year 23. That one's the one that closed on June 30 of 2023. So we went into the current year, FY24, and on June the 20th, the council adopted a budget, June the 20th, 2023, in the amount of general fund budget establishing $17,767,26,000 budget. And in July of '23, several budget amendments were carried forward. That included, let's see, the street repair at First and Jackson Street, which has been completed now. The second item, and I'm on page 3 of 14, where you have your list of budget amendments by date and ordinance number. So you'll see in item number 3, on July the 18th, we carried forward about 1.262 million and some change over as a capital outlay carry forward into the current year, which means that some of the offset funds from American Rescue Plan that have been allocated by the council to certain projects have been carried forward or other things that weren't spent, that were obligated but not spent in the prior year. So, then we've had some various other budget amendments to help with either receiving grant funds, so we can add them to our budget, or transferring out additional funds for maintenance and then our workers' comp. So ultimately, what it comes down to in our current year, our amended budget after tonight's adoption of ordinance 2024.09, our operating expenditure budget right now is currently $19,435,302. So if you compare that to what's being requested, we're only, what's being requested is 2% higher than where we are right now based on our projected expenditures. And again, all of our budgeting is based on predictions. You predict we're going to, we predict we're going to receive a certain amount of money. We predict or plan to spend a certain amount of money. And all throughout the year and every month, our finance staff is looking at every line by line to make sure that we're on budget and stay within the transfers that are allowed in certain amounts to help cover expenses without having to bring everything to you. But there's a lot of needs, and I really want to thank my staff for being fiscally responsible too, because while the monies are shown in the accounts, we realize that we do not have to spend it all. We spend it as we need it, but we're not always trying to deplete all of our funds. So as we look at our anticipated funds or our projected expenditures for the upcoming year, it's not saying that this is, that they're all final figures, because things change. But we feel like this is enough that we won't have to come back to council to ask for additional funds as well. In looking at the current tax levy, we mentioned this sum, but yes, in 2020, or effective January 1 of 2024, the Halifax County property tax valuation took place. And I've moved over to, or flipped to the next page, page 4 of 14. So in fiscal year '23, that ended last June, we had, and this is in the table here, the FY23 ad valorem tax levy from the audit report. This data is directly from our audit report, the audited funds. So as you can see, that we estimated, or you can see what we've received based on some of these. And also Halifax County gets 2% of that since they collect our taxes and through that agreement. But, so in the FY23 budget, we estimated that we would receive $721,721,507, and then we actually received more than that. So as far as our revenues and expenditures, I would say this to create an example that we try to be very conservative in estimating our revenues and then in some cases, expecting the worst scenario in our expenses. So there's flexibility. After the property valuation, the Halifax County, our property values went from 1.3 billion to about 1.524 billion, which is only about a 16% increase during the valuation year. So a 16.47% change because of the revaluation. And there's been a lot of statements and questions about, you know, properties have gone up certain percentages. Well, everyone's individual situation is different. And as we heard as examples tonight, the rates have changed and all that. The rate is the same for everyone. It's the value of the property that's determined by Halifax County is where the other number comes from. So this is truly what is kind of, is needed, is some reset. This helps us to accomplish by looking at, or the revaluation does help us in many ways, because it increases our bottom line as far as what it is. But then when you look at the tax rate of that, the annual increases between the other tax years, the property values only increase by 1.34% annually on average. So prior years, we were growing about 1.34%, and then with the revaluation or the assignment of new values to property, our overall values went up by 16%. So, which is, it's still, it's incremental, is what it is for the city. So when we have the revaluation year, we have to publish a revenue-neutral tax rate. And with that, it only, what it means is that when the year you have a revaluation of our general reappraisal of value of property, we have to compare what a revenue-neutral tax rate would be for what the rate would be, the estimated same revenue from the current fiscal year. And so the revenue-neutral rate provided by Halifax County was at 57.86 cents per hundred to generate about the same revenue. This, by general statutes, is a statement that has to be made and published in there, but it's not, there's no requirements to meet that annually. Cities, when they're developing their budgets, set their tax rate. And so if there's any changes, we have to notify them, we have to notify the county every year of our tax rate. So this time next year, we'll be looking again at tax rate and proposal, depending on our needs in the budget. The fiscal year '25 budget was presented, or that's presented, is balanced using a rate of 64.1 cents per 100, evaluation, which is a two-cent decrease from the current rate of .661. On page 5 of 14, and it was pointed out in an example here this evening, I've caught a couple of things of where that information came from, but it kind of gives you a general idea of what the revenue does, what the difference in the tax rate makes on here. But I need to go back and look at some of these to make sure I have it, because I think it might be just a portion of the property values. But either way, you can see that the difference in changing the rate, what kind of revenue it would generate for the city. We have for years been asked to maintain the current tax rate, and we've been asked to maintain or not use fund balance. Basically, our budget's been growing, and we've been struggling for years to find ways to make it balance out as other revenue sources have either declined or have been eliminated from the budget. And so if we look at the entire budget and you look at the things over time, we'll see that the, you know, the city has a lot of deferred needs, especially maintenance of our facilities and buildings that we need to catch up on. The proposed budget at 641 cents is believed to help cover the increased costs that we're experiencing as well as funding for necessary projects and the deferred maintenance. It helps to set us up for the future as far as our servicing through the open gov financial software that is desperately needed for us to be able to operate. And that's a one-time expense, the bigger expense is a one-time expense, it's not a regular recurring. But usually, there's, year one is much higher. And then we're also prioritizing the council's wishes for, to improve the community appearance, to be able to have, to be able to continue to collect and pick up trash and everything else that, and improve our city. And a lot of it starts with also improving our own properties that have been neglected for some time. And looking at the revenue highlights, you know, ad valorem taxes are our highest source, are our number-one source of revenue. So again, the tax rate is something that is very significant and crucial to the development of the fiscal year '25 budget. So the additional revenue, again, and we're estimating a collection for the FY25 year of 98.97. And this information as well comes from the county. And so we expect at 641 cents or .641 cents per hundred to generate about 9.673 million in revenues. According to the Halifax County revenue-neutral report, one cent is expected to generate $150,905 after collection costs and other discounts are deducted from that. And the ad valorem tax revenue includes the motor vehicle tax proceeds as well. The proposed use, or the proposal to use the tax rate above the revenue-neutral rate, you know, will be used to generate these outstanding deferred operational and capital needs while anticipating potential declines in sales tax revenues or ones that are not, the line items in the revenues that are not growing as quickly as they used to. Our second largest source of revenue are sales taxes. I've looked at the sales tax data over the years, and for the last maybe 30 years, you see ebbs and flows, and a lot of it just depends on the market conditions. And then in circumstances similar to ours in the past, sales tax revenues have been either held steady or have been impacted some. But what we have been prepared for is for them to cool off some, but not altogether decline as much. But we know that there's a potential for sales tax revenues to decline because the consumer spending is not what it used to be. People don't have as much disposable income, especially since the supplemental funding has expired from the COVID eras. PAL bill funds are another large source of funds that are used for our streets as well, based on population and miles. And another one of our largest revenue sources are the solid waste fees, our trash collection. That operation, based on what's billed in our operations for it, it's self-funded. The city couldn't be able to contract it out and save any money. So that is something that is definitely needed, and we definitely appreciate the service that our public works department provides when collecting refuse from our properties, because sometimes people take it for granted that you can actually put a piece of furniture appliance out in your yard and it'll be collected, where in other parts of the county, you have to take it somewhere else yourself. And moving on to the expenditures, page 8 of 14, the debt service. The city is going to enter the fiscal year '25 with just over a million dollars in currently obligated tax debt. We started out this year in fiscal year '24 with five debt instruments, and we're going to go into '25 with three. We have some vehicles and fire station two refinancing that are in addition to the 2017 A bonds payments that are due, and those amounts broken out by principal and interest, and the total amounts due are shown. This is just for FY25. If you go down to the next table below it, it shows the long-term debt. And you can see in here, in fiscal year 2033, if we do not borrow any funds, we will not have any debt. But we know that's probably not realistic, but again, it's better than where we have been. We've been eliminating debt and not bringing on additional debts over time. Some of the largest expenses for the city are our personnel costs. This is a service industry. We are served by human beings in general that do use some computer equipment, but in general, most of our activities are completed... in general, most of our activities are completed manually by humans. And so it's very important that we attract, retain, and train a workforce that understands the needs of service in our community, especially to be able to provide them in a professional and caring manner. Because sometimes people wonder, why did it take you so long to get something done? Well, sometimes the, a neighbor or a citizen will come in and want to talk to you for, you know, several hours. But again, communication with residents and helping to solve problems is a lot of what our staff do on a daily basis. And so with that being said, and like many other local governments, is governments are going to pay more money per employee than the private sector would. I mean, excuse me, they're going to pay less, or they're going to pay more because of their benefits, but the pay is generally, the actual salaries are competitively less for the public sector, but there are benefits that are part of that as well, like retirements that help to make the public service more attractive. As far as our health insurance is covered, the city pays 100% for all full-time employees for your health and dental and vision. Initially, we looked at a initial, I guess, renewal of our current plan. And at one point, there was one agreement or one increase, and then we negotiated down to another small increase. And then we went back to the table with GW Huggs and Company and said, well, can we, what if we change our plan? And so we were able to change our healthcare plan from a 6040 to a 7030 and adjust the deductibles, and then we adjusted the HRA benefit. And so our overall costs for Blue Cross Health Insurance have, it's been a minimal change from what we're currently paying. And we didn't experience any increases really in dental and vision insurance. As we've said, the, you know, the city is required to provide health insurance, and we're also required to contribute to the retirement system. The rates that the city has to contribute are incrementally going up every year, and a lot of that has to do with inflation and also retirees entering the retirement market and being able to keep up with, maintain that affordability there. Police officers receive an automatic 5% 401K contribution because it's mandated by state law. And we currently, our budget, or the FY25 budget includes 156 full-time equivalent employee positions. And at the time I wrote this initially, we had five vacancies, but we're still doing really great compared to this time last year where we had over 20 vacancies when we were presenting the budget. So our people, our staff help, they basically, they fund every, or they make everything happen. So when we get down to it here, the general fund allocation by department, we can look at this, like general government and administration includes many of the, just the government expenses, and then administration includes finance department, city manager's office, city council, and so forth. The budget includes a 3% cost of living increase and maintains the $250 holiday bonus for all full-time employees and maintains the 3% 401K match for participating employees. So the overall government and administration budget is about 4.673 million or 24% of the general fund budget. The police department comes in at $4,379,030 or 22%. The fire department is 2.8 million or 14%. Public Works, just over 5 million at 26%. Parks and Recreation, about 2.228 or 11% of the general fund budget. And then the planning department at 657,400 or 3%. These percentages are very similar to percentages from previous fiscal years. One division may go from 24 to 25 or 24 to 26, but in general, it's about the same. And on the next page, page 11 of 14, it shows this graphically represented with the amounts and the pie charts. So in all, you know, the budget is a process that is, it requires a lot of information and gathering, and we have a lot of, I feel like the FY25 budget that is recommended before you helps us to maintain our current service levels and be able to enhance those service levels and with some adjustments in the tax rate because of valuation, and then also to be able to retain our staff and train them and consider those options as well. We know that the upcoming fiscal year, there are some expenses that could be one-time expenses, and so every situation, every year is going to be different that we go into it. So like I said, even looking back at the past, there have been some years where the city has had budgets of much higher, not compared to this one, but where the changes have occurred. So it's all dependent upon the needs that we have. And then on pages 13 and 14, these, page 13 is the general fund revenues by source. The change in fiscal year 25 is representative by the alternative or proposed tax rate of 64.1 cents per 100. And again, this page right here, this comes from estimates from our, they're not audited numbers. These come from the actual estimates that we presented to the council at these, at this particular time of the budget phase in the last few years, or, excuse me, not, they were the ones that were adopted at the time, but not amended with the budget amendments. So it gives you an idea of where we are and where things have kind of increased and decreased with time. On the last page, page 14 of 14, this is the expenditures by department, and so it'll show some of those, the way we were on July 1st, even though that budget has been amended, the 7123 budget has been amended up to 19 and some million, but there has been a change in property and building maintenance towards the bottom. We'll see those percentage changes, but, so we have that. We have a departmental request, recommendation column, and the difference and the percentage difference from FY24 to 25. So overall, the amended, well, the unamended budget, so the budget that we started out with in the budget, in this current fiscal year, and the budget that is recommended is a difference of 10.53%, but that is actually lower, closer to two after we considered the amendments from the current fiscal year additions. Subject to your questions, that concludes my report at the moment.
A lot of information. Thank you. Questions from the council? So our next, after we finish this meeting, our next will be to set off time for the hearing.
Yes, so what we're asking for action tonight, we're asking for is a motion to set the public hearing for Tuesday, July the 4th during the regular council meeting at 5:30. And as part of that, we do have to advertise the proposed tax rate as what we're in, reflect those grand totals of our budget. Did I say the 4th? Or, oh, I said July, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. My doughnuts for lunch kicking in. But so the requested action this evening is for a motion to set the public hearing for June the 4th at 5:30 based on the recommended budget and the tax rate at 641 cents per 100.
Y'all, do I have any questions?
And I will, I just want to say one more thing, too. We advertised the budget, but we can still make changes to the budget until we get to the adoption. So on June 4th would be the public hearing, receive comments. And then on June the 18th, which is our second regular meeting, would be the adoption, our hopeful adoption date. We need to have the budget adopted before July 1. But right now, we have presented a balanced budget, and any changes, we're going to need to have revenues and expenditures adjusted with it. And department heads are present and available to answer any questions as well that y'all may have. What we can't do, though, is advertise a rate and then have an increased rate when we adopt it, so.
You said in your, on page 12 of 14, second, second sentence in bold type, "City has a rich history and a diverse culture, and we must recognize how the city is evolving, growing, and advancing forward." In this same time period, we received, I think it was an email or text, some kind of information, that the latest census, it said we had lost two or three, 400 more people than from a previous count. And, you know, we all know that that is, had been a trend for quite a few years. I stated in my, at our last meeting that we haven't, we haven't generated any new revenue other than, you know, what we're going to try to do on the back of the taxpayers. And I equated that to other businesses that, you know, increased their, their pricing to try to keep their revenue neutral or increasing some. And eventually that is, it turns out usually not to be real good. You mentioned the sales tax being down because people did not have as much disposable income. Well, during the pandemic and along that, you know, people were getting money to try to help them get through, and I think that had a big effect on the sales tax revenue being up as much as it was. But now, most of that has gone away, so as you said, people don't have as much disposable income because we all know that realistically, everything, everything has gone up more than what they say it's gone up when you're looking at television and that type thing. I think that the, the bill that is, I think is in the legislature now about a casino would be a windfall for us if we would, not so much we, but if the people at the theater were be able to, to make that come to reality, it would create just, you know, more sales tax, more property tax as well as revenues from that. That could have extremely big effect on us. The other thing that bothers me and concerns me is that you talked about the, the money that would go towards the, what would make it easier for you all to, to be able to carry out your business. But, you know, we're, we're here to do everything we can for the citizens also. And so I had mentioned a couple of times about paving, and you, you made a comment to me about maybe at the end of the year, we might have some money left over, and we might be able to, to move that into, I don't know if we could do it in next year's budget, but we still, we still have a lot of places in town that in desperate need of attention for us, you know, being able to get around with reasonable, a reasonable road to ride on, and also the demolition. We talked to planning director at the last meeting, and I don't think she gave us a number, but we all know that there's a lot of properties in town. We've heard from citizens that gave their opinion about not wanting us to take down other people's property, and I, I kind of have that same feeling, too, but, you know, if it's a, it's a health hazard or a fire hazard, or it's just that I saw, that to me is the kind of thing that, you know, could keep people from moving to our community. So maybe the legislature will see at some point how they might could give us a little more leverage to be able to extract some money from those people that own those properties instead of it continuing on the way it is right now. We also, you know, as you said, we would be out of debt if we didn't incur any more debt in, in about eight more years, which when I came on this council 15 years ago, it was like 20 some years before we'd ever get to this point. And I mean, it's like you can kind of see the end of the tunnel now. And the other good feeling is that we probably could pay it off in less than that if, if we want to. But between, you know, we can, we can go ahead and set our June the 4th, is that, that the date? June the 4th? You know, we can, we can go ahead and set that, but I would, I would just ask the people on this council to, to think about how you, because you're going to be the one that's charged with the budget that we accept, not going to be the city manager, it's not going to be the department head, it's going to be you and me. We're going to be the ones that quote, get the praise or the criticism or whatever it is, it's going to be on us. And, you know, I know the city manager is charged with bringing a budget to us, but there's nothing that says that we have to accept it exactly as it is. And, you know, you, you can make changes in it. So with that being said, nobody else has any questions, I would ask for a motion if someone would like to make one.
I'd like to make a comment. Based on the four years that I have been on the council prior, and this budget, it's become very obvious to me that there have been a lot of needs that we have tended to neglect or not address in the past. No one likes to feel like they are raising taxes, but there's also, there also comes a time when we have to address and fix this infrastructure if we're ever going to be able to be the city that we want, that's going to attract people, that's going to maintain people. And you can't do that without maintaining your employees. Your employees are your greatest asset. And I have quoted in the past that I thought the cities had good benefits. I still stand by that. But I also understand that a person wants to come to work, they want to be able to have decent equipment to work with. I feel like when I came on, we addressed implementing this computer system that was going to, and we made a start, I remember, because I remember receiving a call from someone from out of town that was interested in putting in a proposal for this hotel back here. And she wasn't going to be able to get it in to us by 5 o'clock because we didn't have a system where people could communicate and submit that type of information after hours. So I think we've made the initial investment. We've heard from the different department heads how they will benefit, be more efficient, and hopefully have more time to devote to making the city better in the areas of which they are maintaining. So with that, I'd just like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget during the June 4th, 2024 city council meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant and a second by Mr. Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, no, the motion will be approved. Thank you, Ms. Bryant. City manager report?
I'm going to keep this brief tonight. You have your departmental reports enclosed within your packets. Our primary focus has been on this budget process. A lot goes into this, and when you change one number in one place, you have to go back and find out all the manual places that we've had. But we look forward to the day when we'll reduce our manual errors in lieu of a system that will help us with more accuracy and efficiency in the budget development process. I do want to say, make one comment to I do want to say, make one comment to Parks and Recreation Director John Simian. This is his last council meeting as a department head, and he'll move on to being a retiree June first. So just want to make a moment just to say thank you for everything that you've done. You're going to be impossible to replace, and you've been just absolute joy to work with, as Christina nailed it, and she said, you're the golden retriever of the group. No matter when times are stressful or whatever, you generally help us find a way to laugh. But it's, it's a, we've had a lot of changes in, in leadership on the elected council and also in department heads. And every time there's a change, we have to adjust and, and regroup and, and go through those orientation phases. And so I don't look forward to having to change anything, but I do hope that you enjoy every moment of your retirement. And on Friday, the thirty-first, we'll have a retirement reception where he'll be recognized with his city council plaque. So Friday, May thirty-first, at TJ Davis, from I think, eleven, eleven-thirty to one-thirty. Okay.
John, I want to publicly acknowledge your service and say thank you for all you've done. I already know that I'm not going to be here on the thirty-first. Lydia Faith celebrates her third birthday on June first, and I have been summoned to be there on the thirty-first to help with her birthday party at daycare. So she's having two. But just know that I, along with my family, because my, my children grew up here, participated in all kinds of camps and the different services, swimming, basketball, soccer, all of that through, during your tenure. And I appreciate it, and they do. I say thank you. My son Kevin regards you highly. He remembers how he was treated, how the students his age were treated. And he said, you were always fair. And I think that sticks out and says a lot. But again, just thank you for your service to the city, and we will definitely miss you.
Thank you again, Ms. Bryant. Does that conclude your report? Finance?
As of April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, we're fifteen, around fifteen point eight million. Year-to-date expenditures was around fourteen point six million. We collect the abolumen, motor vehicle tax, sales tax, hold harmless. We have several payments that we have not, you know, receipts that we have not collected yet. Abolumen for May and June, motor vehicle tax for May and June, sales and use tax for March through June, hold harmless for March through June, utility franchise, the quarterly payment we'll receive in June, B and Y, we will receive, should receive by the end of this month, and residential and commercial solid waste fees for May and June. So overall, I feel like we're in a good financial standing.
Mr. Furby not here tonight, so I'll ask you how much money we're going to have when we get finished.
I think we're, I think we're going to be pretty good.
It looks like you got right good bit coming in.
Yeah, especially around the interest earnings. We're doing very well with that this year.
Okay, is that, okay, thank you, ma'am. Any other business that needs to come before us tonight?
I have one thing, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
This was brought to my attention later this afternoon. Saturday at seven o'clock, the police department was asked to assist the Boy Scouts in placing eighteen hundred small American flags on the grave markers of all the military veterans that are in the Cedarwood Cemetery. If anybody has anything that they're not doing Saturday morning, if you want to come help out, that's a lot of flags, so.
What time you going to be in?
Seven o'clock, Saturday morning, at the entranceway to Cedarwood Cemetery. Eighteen hundred small flags, the Boy Scouts are doing, that's a great little thing they're doing. But police department's helping out, but we need anybody that wants to help out. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. It doesn't take long for them to put those flags down. It sounds like a lot, but their experience, they know where a lot of them go, that they need the help on the ground. And just want to make mention that on Monday, Memorial Day, Monday, city offices will be closed in observance of the holiday. But then there, on Monday, that the AMPUTS is having a ceremony, a Memorial Day ceremony at Cedarwood Cemetery at ten AM, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. That's it.
That it? John, on behalf of the council, we wish you a long and happy and prosperous retirement. I know you'd be looking forward to it, and ain't nothing like it, I tell you that. That retirement is good. So I encourage everybody to try it soon as you can. Everybody likes their job, but when people retire, they don't say they miss their job too much. But anyway, okay, we need a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Bell and second by Mrs. Steinbach. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.